And welcome to the Monday, May 3rd Select Board Regular Meeting. I will start by reading a remote script for Select Board Meetings. This is Select Board Chair Tom LaCusa. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Strange.
Here.
Steve Morantz.
Here.
Richard Foster.
Here.
Mark Gold.
Here.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Paul Festerzic.
Here.
All right, and Mike Barbieri.
Here.
All right. So this open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. The Long Meadow Select Board is convening by Zoom webinar as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. For resident comments, using the Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. And if members of the public would like to speak during the resident comment section, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will unmute you and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Members of the public who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes to comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. The ground rules are I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that generates accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. With that being said, our first order of agenda is generally the COVID update. And so Chief Doorboard is with us, but Town Manager Lynn Simmons will be giving us that update.
Great, thank you, Tom. So I'm happy to report tonight that we have nine community cases that are currently active. This is our first time in single digits in quite some time. So we are definitely going in the right direction. We're going to continue to monitor the cases that come in this week and make a determination if we're still showing that positive decline, that we will put basketball hoops back up hopefully by the end of this week. But again, it's going to be determined based on the case counts that come in over the next few days. These should be the numbers that we're seeing based on any travel that occurred over April Vacation Week. Very cautiously optimistic that we'll see a continued decline there. That's really all I have for an update tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, well, that's good. There's been a lot of nice basketball weather. So I know that there's young people waiting for those to show up, the hoops show up. Any questions from the members of the board? Okay.
No, I see a few.
Oh, you do. I'm sorry.
So Mark Gold had his hand up first.
Lynn, is there any way of us knowing the number of residents who have been vaccinated or the percentage of residents who have gotten vaccinated as it moves forward?
Yeah, that's a great question. We've been asking that internally as well. As of right now, no, we can't get a breakdown from DPH regarding vaccination rates by community. They will share it with us by county, but we don't have one based on residential community.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yep, Steve Morantz, I see.
Question in terms of face masks. The President said we can not wear them if we're outdoors and vaccinated and socially distanced. Has the Governor, has the State in agreement with the feds about outdoor masking?
Yeah, so last week, the Governor repealed some of the restrictions, one of which was face masking outdoors. So if you can keep a distance apart from someone and you are outside, you can take your face mask off. So we've been going around removing some of the signs that we had up on the tree belts. There may be some rogue ones still out there that we will grab when we can. But yes, if you're outside and you can safely socially distance and you're not in large gatherings, then you do not need to wear a mask.
Vaccinated or not?
Correct. I don't recall seeing whether you were vaccinated or not having it have a distinction of wearing a mask.
Okay, good. Any other questions? All right, well, hopefully folks are clear on that. If people had any additional questions, they probably could still check there's a website the State has about the current state of restrictions, right? I know I'm still wiping everything down, you know, with alcohol in my office, my chairs are turning, you know, I'm losing all the finish. But they haven't repealed that yet either, I don't think. All right. So the next would be our announcements. We have a few announcements, Lynn, do you want to make those?
Yeah, there's just two tonight. Thank you. So a reminder that town meeting is coming up Sunday, May 16th at 1:00. Assuming that we don't have a rain date. If we do have a rain date, it'll be May 23rd. But we would make that determination in the days leading up to the May 16th date. So reminder, it's May 16th, 1:00 at Long Meadow High School. For more information or to see a copy of the warrant online, you can visit longmeadow.org. And there's a link on the homepage there. And warrant booklets were mailed to all the households two weeks ago. And there's a Long Meadow Annual Shredding Event, which will take place on May 8th, 9 to 11, at Long Meadow High School Student Parking Lot. You can place your unwanted private documents in a bin in the trunk of your car. And the bin will be emptied into a Valley Green shredding machine for safe and confidential destruction of documents. The shredded paper will then be recycled. There is a two-lu bin limit and no pre-registration is required. If you need more information, you can contact the DPW at (567) 3400.
Okay, and then the prescription drug takeback day, is that still going to happen on April 24th? Or is that dated, I guess?
Yeah, that already happened. I accidentally included on there.
Ten minutes, okay. All right, great. So that's our announcements. And the next, we would move to resident comments. Lynn, is there any residents who are indicating?
So just a reminder, if you use the raise hand feature, if you did want to speak, we will then call on you. Okay, Tom, I'm not seeing anyone.
All right. Then we can move on to Select Board comments. Is there any Select Board comments? Seeing none, we can move on to our next item of the agenda, which is the Town Manager's Report.
Okay, thank you. So the Hampden County Regional Retirement Board, this is just to come back and give you an update that at your April 20th meeting, you had asked Paul and I to inquire with Town Council on two items related to retirement. One is the mechanism to remove the town of Long Meadow from the Hampden County Regional Retirement System. And the second relates to investigating whether the town can grandfather current employees and put employees hired after a certain date on defined contribution plan as opposed to the current defined benefits plan. Town Council has assigned these topics to an attorney who specializes in employment and benefits, employment law and benefit systems. And as soon as I have an update, I will share it back here with the Select Board. Regarding the sewer winter averaging conversation, town staff is continuing to explore the use of Munis utility billing to accomplish winter averaging for sewer bills. We're scheduled to convene again with Munis staff in the middle of May. In reaching out to other communities, we have found that only the town of Acton so far in our responses is using Munis for utility billing and applying a winter average for sewer bills. The billing Acton is done via every single month. And it's, they have not been successful in applying quarterly billing to those winter average sewer bills. And then even though Munis has instructed them, as they did with us in our demos, that it is possible. They have not been able to get it to work yet. So I hope to offer a more detailed update at either the May 17th meeting or the June 7th meeting. A new treasure collector was hired and has started in the position. Erica Brunel joins us after previously working for the town of Ware as the treasure collector. Erica brings years of service working in the banking industry prior to working for the town of Ware. In the role in banking, she served as an e-services manager for Country Bank of Savings. Staff welcomed Erica to Town Hall and we're really glad to have a full staff back at the office. Middle school statement of interest, we received word from the Massachusetts School Building Authority that the statement of interest that was submitted for Williams and Glenbrook Middle Schools was not invited into the MSBA eligibility period at this time. The MSBA just began accepting statements of interest for consideration in 2021. And at an upcoming Select Board meeting, we will hear directly from Superintendent O'Shea on this topic.
Thank you. Any questions on the manager's report? Oh, yes, Steve Morantz. We need to unmute you something.
Question on the sewer water billing. We did vote to do quarterly billing and five months winter averaging. I understand that the five-month winter averaging seems to be subject to ability of Munis to do it. And also, they might be able to do six-month winter averaging. But unless, Mr., I did have a conversation with Paul. It seemed to indicate that the quarterly billing was doable. And so I would hope that we could start the quarterly billing as soon as the next quarter for quarterly billing, at least to get that part of what we wanted to have done. And I would hope that when the officials speak to Munis that the concept of actually going back and the data is there for the last, for the winter six months, 2020, 21, those numbers are there. They just have to be found and that be found for everyone's house. And I'm not sure how one does that computer-wise, but if we can do that to actually get the six-month averaging, maybe it would not be, obviously won't be for the next quarterly billing or even the quarterly billing after that. But if we can get that done sooner as opposed to later without bringing a large cost to the town, I would hope that that could be looked at. But I am, I would hope that the quarterly billing could start as soon as possible.
Okay. I just, building on your comment, I know with computers, there are, I developed this program and I had so many people say, what you want to do is great, but it won't be able to do that until five, about five more years. And it took a while till I found someone who said, oh, that, what you need, I would give as a homework assignment. So I'm wondering if the town might need to hire a consultant who can then work with this Munis and sort of bridge the gap between what our needs are and what they think they can meet, but maybe they can't. And I guess I would throw that out to you, Lynn, that if this continues, we may just, there probably is a consultant who would say, oh, yeah, I can do that for a couple hundred bucks and it could save us a lot of trouble. Any other comments on the Town Manager's Report or any? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on. To, we have to approve an old business, approve the minutes of the 4/20/21 meeting. Do you have a motion to approve those?
I move we approve the minutes of the April 20th, 2021 regular meeting of the Select Board.
Okay, we have a second? Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And Mike Barbieri, will you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Lucusa?
Abstain.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a town meeting update. And we have a agenda of, a draft of the agenda for the annual town meeting that we received and the final warrant with the motions and discussions. Lynn, I don't know, do we have, is Rebecca going to make some comments as we go into this?
Yes, I think Rebecca is here and definitely can speak to items. One change that you'll see this year is an agenda this time. So you'll see a draft agenda there, kind of will help the public and I think all of us just keep in sight what we have at that meeting, never mind just the warrant articles, but we do have some items before that. So we thought that may be helpful to have an actual agenda for the meeting. And there also is a draft consent agenda as well. Both myself and Paul Pesterzic have gone through the warrant and bundled articles together that we felt could be included on a consent agenda, so we have done that. And Mike is working on the preparation of the motions. And one item to discuss tonight is just to confirm attendance at the meeting on the 16th, so that we can make sure that we have the motions properly assigned. Mike, did you want to talk at all about what you had done, what you had drawn up for those motions?
Yeah, sure. So right now I just included the warrant for discussion in inside this agenda packet. And I pretty much just highlighted, you'll notice at the top, there's a key with everyone's name in the color code. And then if you scroll down, you'll see it just kind of goes in order of that, of that key. As to who would be reading what motion as I assign. And that, those aren't the motions on there. The motions will be available hopefully within the next week. But that was just to give you guys a reference as to which motions included it with the consent agendas as to who would be reading which.
Great.
I think it breaks down to about five motions apiece approximately.
Yeah, it worked out to five motions apiece with the consent agendas and all.
All right. I don't think we're going to argue over how many we get. But I did have a question. Lynn, will everyone be getting a copy of the agenda as they enter the meeting?
We haven't discussed that level of detail yet. We will be doing that tomorrow in a meeting. And then whether or not we have copies there or not, I'm not entirely sure, but it would, I think, be a good idea.
Well, it would like be less confusing for people, you know, when we did this consent agenda, if they weren't paying attention and they said, oh, wait a minute, we're on 10. What happened? We were just on three. So that would be, I think would be helpful. But we have to again, you know, look at the distributing papers, a COVID issue, and I'll turn that over to our moderator.
And Lynn, lastly, just before, I see if Rebecca has anything she wants to add. We did put out a survey. There were just three questions, just to try to gauge interest in it, in how many people may be attending. And I, Mike, were you able to check those results this afternoon?
Yeah, as of right now, we had 52 responses for the survey. So it's a little bit of a slow start to the survey in general, but I don't think that really has too much implication or indication on the actual attendance, because after looking at the numbers from last year, I think 100 and, I think maybe 95 people took the survey and there was over 200 people at town meetings, so.
Okay. So are we going to hear anything from Rebecca Towns?
I wanted to thank Lynn and Mike for the assistance that they have done thus far. The agenda is an excellent document to have and having the motions clear in advance is going to be really helpful. My goal is to have an orderly meeting, making sure that everybody gets their voices heard, has time to deliberate, but that we do keep to our business. And so if there's any suggestions that voters have that they want to see, please contact me if they have any questions about any particular motion, any particular amendments, any, any questions that they, they have. I just wanted to use this time to remind folks that they can contact me at any point to ask questions. If it's a phone call, it's confidential. If it's email, it's public. So just keep that in mind. And if the board had questions about the particular warrant articles, I'm happy to talk through any questions that you have about that with me now.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board? Okay, I don't see any questions, so.
Tom, could I add one thing or two things, actually?
Please, Tom.
Just very quickly on the draft motions that were presented, I do want to bring your attention that Article number 10, the budget article, there will be, there has to be an amendment to that motion already. By law, the school board budget voted by the school committee needs to be read into the main motion. But the select board had approved a budget that was slightly different. So there will have to be an amendment that will bring the select board's budget into play on the floor of town meeting, so we will get that to you. And then Article number 20, the amount is going to change. The amount written in the, in the motion right now is $100,000. That amount will be reduced to $92,500 as we have expended $7,500 of that original $100,000. So just want to bring that to your attention now. And we will get those revisions to you and any other revisions that come up within, as Mike said, next week or so.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, I have one question.
Please.
I, I thought Article 40 was a citizen's petition. That's the one on the solar.
I can answer that question. Town Council, because it originally came in as a citizen's petition, but by agreement between the petitioner and the select board to postpone them, he no longer believed that they were petitions for this particular warrant and that they should be considered to be part of the warrant as not being petitioned. The only one that has petitioned for this warrant is the one that actually came in specifically at this, you know, when the window of opportunity was open for this, for this agenda.
Okay, well, then I have a technical question, I guess, for the moderator. Any questions that come up? Are we going to revert back to the original petitioner to answer them?
So, yes, we, questions that the petitioner that had previously put the articles on the warrant last year, I would be turning to him for questions on those. If they're related to the planning board or something that the planning board recommends, I would turn to the planning board. It really depends on the nature of the question.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure he didn't turn to me.
I will know now not to turn to you on that. Thanks, Richard.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question, though, given Paul's comments about Article 20 and Article 10. So Article 20 right now is listed as part of the consent agenda. Would that be then removed from the consent agenda?
I would suggest it should be, yes.
Yeah, I'm assuming it is, but I'd rather have it clear. And then Article 10, will you be adding a motion to the motion sheet?
Yes, we will give you the whole script.
Perfect.
We'll give you the original motion and the amended motion.
Great, thank you. I think it'll help out a lot.
Good. Any other last minute things? This is our last meeting before the town meeting. So.
If I could add one, one last thing. Last year, we had a very abbreviated town meeting in terms of what we did traditionally. There were only a few things that we do every year that we added in last year. But we removed, say, for example, the ceremony with regard to the flag. We removed the ceremony with regard to honoring citizens of the year, I'm sorry, the the thanking the boards and committees. And those are important community building moments that are part of town meeting. And we will be adding them in this year. So I just wanted to reassure people that those traditions are returning. They're not gone forever.
Great. And they are on the agenda.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right, thanks for joining us, Rebecca. So if there's no further questions regarding that, we can move on to, we have a couple of good announcements. We, you know, Lynn has set up, set up a couple of committees to do, to be involved in the search for some new department heads. And so our first order of new business is the approval of the DPW director. And hopefully you guys have all seen the appointment memo. And we're going to present Jeffrey McAlmond for appointment to the Public Works Director, filling the vacancy created by resignation of Mario Maza. Lynn, did you have anything to comment on before we decide on this?
I put everything in a memo. I'm happy to read pieces of it if you'd like me to. The memo is linked on the agenda if anyone would like to see it. It's up to you, Tom, if you want me to go through it or if you just like.
It's sort of a big deal, this DPW director, so give folks at home a little bit of an idea of who.
Sure, thanks.
So how long you wait for this?
So thank you. I'm pleased to present tonight Jeff McAlmond for appointment, Jeffrey McAlmond, sorry, for appointment to the position of Department of Public Works Director. As Tom stated, this fills the vacancy created with Mario Maza's resignation. Many of you will already know Mr. McAlmond. He currently serves as the Town of Long Meadows Deputy Director for DPW Operations, a role that he has held since 2015. In this role, he's responsible for the divisions of vehicle maintenance, grounds, solid waste and highway, including snow and ice operations. Mr. McAlmond has an accomplished and diverse career in public works. Prior to joining the Town of Long Meadow, he was the Deputy Director of DPW Operations for the Town of West Springfield. In this role, he implemented a concept of unified workforce amongst divisions, managed the cleanup of contaminated soils at the town's greenhouse, and was a member of the Executive Safety Control Committee. Prior to this time, prior to his time in West Springfield, he served as Deputy Director of Public Works for the Town of Enfield, Connecticut for 20 years. While serving there, he organized a comprehensive maintenance activities for the town's 13 facility locations, including mechanical systems. Prior to the role in Enfield, he served as General Manager and Corporate Secretary for the Hazardville Water Company, privately held public utility serving a population of approximately 20,000 people. Mr. McAlmond holds an Associate of Applied Science degree in civil technology from Mohawk Valley Community College. He is a member of the Massachusetts Tree Wardens Association and American Public Works Association and the Arbor Day Association. He had, Mr. McAlmond has the experience, knowledge and understanding of a progressive public works operation. His vision and strategic planning goals will help serve the Town of Long Meadow well. And I am very pleased to submit his appointment as our next Director of Department of Public Works for the Select Board for confirmation in accordance with the Long Meadow Charter. I also want to thank the interview panel that helped assist in this process, which was made up of Select Board Member Richard Foster, Building Committee Chair Mary Beth Bergeron, Recycling Commission Member Arlene Miller, Assistant Town Manager Finance Director Paul Pesterzic and Human Resource Director Erica Geno. And I do have Jeff McAlmond here tonight to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. So let's see, does the board have any questions or comments regarding this appointment? All right.
Mr. Strange has a comment.
Oh, yes, Mr. Strange, there you are.
Hey, Jeff, congratulations. So you're on mute. Just, just kind of a random question or comment here. I saw that you went to MBCC back in the day. Just wondering if you're, that's, that's, that's from my original neck of the woods. Just wondering if you're, if you're a central New Yorker, a native central New Yorker?
Yes, I grew up in central New York.
Okay, I grew up in Rome.
I lived in the Syracuse area and then many areas around it, surrounding it.
Very good, very good. Welcome aboard and congrats again.
Very much.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Jeff, maybe you could just make a brief statement about what you're, what you're most excited about in this promotion?
Well, becoming a Public Works Director has been my career goal for a very long time. And I think Long Meadow presents an excellent opportunity for me. I think we have a very good team. I think I'm going to enjoy working with Lynn and, and the team that's here. And I think we have a great opportunity to make some strides ahead as we go forward.
Okay, thank you. We're hoping, you know, with the new facility opening up, I know there's been a lot of talk and I'm sure the board will have some more conversations about, you know, things that we would like to see have happened, but we've all taken a tour and it looks pretty good.
Well, there's the entire staff there reporting to work tomorrow, excluding the grounds people.
Oh, great, good. That's great. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, Mark keeps raising his hand.
Oh, I can't see all the folks. I'm sorry. Mark Gold?
Well, I don't have any questions. I was just going to make a motion that we in the select board endorse the appointment of Jeff McAlmond to the Director of DPW.
All right.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for roll call, vote. I'm Mike Barbieri.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
All right. Well, congratulations, Jeffrey. Look forward to working with you. Mark Gold, do you have a comment you'd like?
No, it's now, it's a question is, will we be replacing the Assistant Director's position of, for the DPW now? Is that your intention, either Jeff or Lynn?
Our intention is not to do that immediately. We have the Cowen Study that's starting to take place and we'd like to go see through that and see what the outcome of the Cowen Study is before we make that replacement or decide to make a replacement.
Thank you.
So again, congratulations, Jeffrey.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited.
Okay, great. And we'll move on to our next approval for the appointment of the Finance Director. And the, you know, again, we have a town manager has Jennifer Leyden, who was appointed for this position to replace Paul Pesterzic, who cannot be replaced. But he's retiring and we have to find a couple of people to do his job. So Lynn, will you want to?
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, so tonight I am pleased to present Jennifer Leyden for appointment to the position of Director of Finance and Administration. This is filling the upcoming vacancy created with the retirement of Paul Pesterzic. Ms. Leyden currently serves as the Director of Business and Technology for the City of Springfield Police Department, a role she has held since 2015. In this position, Ms. Leyden is responsible for the overall management of the department's financial plan and fiscal forecasting while overseeing the capital and budget process and a $50 million payroll. Areas of oversight include human resources, information technology, accounts payable and receivable, and special projects. With the City of Springfield, Ms. Leyden has also served as the City Budget Director and a Senior Management Analyst. Before joining the City of Springfield, she worked for Bay State Health Systems as a Senior Budget Analyst. Ms. Leyden holds a master's, sorry, Ms. Leyden holds a Master's Degree in Business Administration from Western New England University and a Bachelor's of Science Degree in Business Management and Finance. She has also served on the Wayfinders Executive Board of Directors and Finance Committee, the Springfield Public School Building Commission, and the City of Springfield Board of Assessors. Ms. Leyden has the demonstrated knowledge and understanding of municipal finance. Her years of experience with budgeting and capital planning work, coupled with her work in preparing multi-year budget documents, will serve the Town of Long Meadow well. I'm very pleased to submit her appointment as our next Director of Finance and Administration to the Select Board in, for confirmation in accordance with the Long Meadow Charter. Additionally, I would like to thank the interview panel that helped assist in this process. This was made up of
This was made up of Select Board Member Mark Gold, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations Tom Maza. Assistant Town Manager Finance Director Paul Pesterzak and Human Resource Director Erica Jalinas. And I do have Jennifer Leyden here tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so welcome Jennifer to our meeting. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? When it comes to numbers, you probably know Jennifer, sometimes people just stare and they don't know what to say. But hopefully, why don't you just tell us a little bit about what makes you excited about this position?
Thank you Tom, I just want to thank Lynn and Paul for the opportunity to take on this role. I know I have some really big shoes to fill and I look forward to doing it. I've looked for an executive position with the town for a little while now and this Long Meadow opportunity has come up and I'm really excited about it. The, my past two bosses have been police commissioners, so numbers aren't their thing either. So I've learned quite well to be able to communicate through, you know, taking numbers and turning it into information and be able to communicate it to people. So I don't, I don't hesitate that at all and just looking forward to working with the town.
All right, thank you. Any questions to the board or comments? Now Lynn, I just had one question in terms of the transition from Paul to Jennifer. Is there going to be a training process over the next month or so?
Yeah, we're working on an exact start date. And we're hoping that there will be some overlap so that Paul can certainly try to pass everything on to Jennifer. So we can have a smooth transition.
Sounds good, sounds great. So I guess we would look for a motion from the board?
So moved.
Okay, to accept Jennifer as our new CFO. A second?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
And Richard Foster, second, any further discussion? Okay, Mike Barbieri, will you take a roll call vote?
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay, so Jennifer's on mute, so we can't hear her saying yeah, 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 you know. But welcome aboard and we'll be working closely with you. We'll see you on a regular basis.
I'm sure, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for joining us. All right, so.
And thanks to Lynn for bringing us two highly qualified applicants to fill division level positions within the town.
You're here. So next we have our, a report from the Coalition for Racial Justice. And we've all received that in our documents. It's a well-written report that's 11 pages long. And with an introduction, talks a little bit about the history of the town, Long Meadow today. Some striking accounts from people who have been involved in the community. Just to sort of alert the board to what some people's experiences have been. They'll talk to the, the direction to, you know, the Select Board action and the charges that we sent them. When we set up the committee. And the, and they have identified a number of different ways that they think we should move forward as a town. And some recommendations for the Select Board to have these things happen and then they have conclusions. And a way to evaluate the success. So Lynn, did you have someone from the committee to talk about this? I see Zach here.
Yes, Tom, we have quite a few from the committee here. And if you would be willing to, I would be happy to move them into panelist so that you can see them. And yes, we do have both co-chairs here.
I tried to move everyone in, but please let me know if I'm missing anyone.
We have Zach. Show Tom. All right, so I guess we will, well, folks are still muted, so. You can't talk much until they unmute you. But again, you know, the Select Board appreciates the effort you've put into this, this endeavor. And, and you know, obviously it's a well-written report, in my opinion. I can't speak for the board, but I guess we'll let you talk a little bit about it. Hopefully we can unmute the co-chairs and they can figure out who's going to speak first. Can people hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you Zach.
Yeah, thank you Tom, and a quick question perhaps for Lynn. Will I have permission to share my screen during the meeting or not?
Yes, hold on one second. Yep, you're all set.
Okay, then I prepared just a few slides for us and I'll, I'll share that momentarily. But I just want to start by thanking the Select Board for the opportunity for this task force to engage in this very important work. It was a true act of leadership and courage to declare racism a public health crisis and to convene this task force. And I want to thank the Select Board for that. I'd also like to thank Lynn Simmons and the many other folks as part of the municipal government. Who helped us with fact finding and data gathering so that we were able to inform some of our recommendations with that. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank the entire task force, many of whom are joining me here this evening. My prepared remarks will be brief. You've had an opportunity to read our report and our recommendations. But I'd also like to reserve the balance of whatever time we might have. So that if there are questions, you're able to hear from the task force directly. As their insight and wisdom and hard work throughout this process is really a big part of what brought the final product together. And so with that, I'd like to share. A few slides that will direct. Our conversation here today. And as many of you know, in the summer of 2020, the Select Board, as I mentioned, declared racism a public health crisis. And followed up a couple of months later in October with the creation of this task force. That would convene to study this crisis and we have spent the last seven months meeting, discussing, researching. We've held public listening sessions to hear from members of the community that are not a part of the task force. To gather data and write up. Final recommendations for the Select Board to consider adopting and implementing. And we have submitted six pages of a. There is a one-page addendum that summarizes many key things. And then we tried to provide three additional pages of additional detail and explanation. And so for our purposes here tonight, I'd like to highlight around our recommendations, the need to commit. To investing resources to eradicate this public health crisis in Long Meadow. I was speaking with a reporter earlier today who was interested in learning more about this work and what was going to take place in the meeting here this evening. And they asked me to highlight a few, a few key recommendations. And I shared that frankly, I couldn't, they're all key as this is a systemic problem with multiple interlocking pieces and parts and it's going to. Thinking effort and investment of things that you see listed here of people, budget, time, planning partnerships, learning. Collecting data and considering policy review and revision in order to disrupt and dismantle. What impacts not only Long Meadow, but so many communities across the country. And that is the historic legacy of racism and oppression in our country. And the biggest, biggest piece and takeaway that I have, if I were to summarize. What we found in our work together was that it's going to take a significant investment over time. To move the needle to create a more equitable and anti-racist Long Meadow. For the purposes of the public that might be watching. At home, I wanted to include some of those key findings from the addendum. I will not read them here. Members of the Select Board and participants in this meeting that have been a part of drafting our proposal are familiar. With some of these recommendations, but in the event that members of the public that are joining that haven't had a chance to read some of them. I wanted to provide them for a quick review now and know that future conversation is certainly warranted. And these are the type of recommendations that are also accompanied by further explanation. And detail in the report that we have provided, which I assume Lynn is now available for any member of the public that might request access to it. So that they can read and follow up with any further detail that might have been provided. So with that. I'd like to once again commend and thank the Select Board for declaring racism a public health crisis as it is. And demonstrating leadership with the creation of the task force. I am excited to see what the Select Force, Select Board does moving forward. As it contemplates which recommendations, if not all, to take up for consideration in creating a more equitable and anti-racist Long Meadow. And so at this time, it would be our pleasure as a task force to entertain any questions. That the Select Board might have for us about our work or our recommendations.
Okay, thank you. So. I will ask the Select Board, is there any, any folks who want to make any comments or questions? Do you have any questions on this?
Mr. Gold has a comment.
Okay, I can't see everyone, I'm sorry. Mr. Gold?
Sorry, yeah, I want to thank the whole committee, the task force for their work on this. I think it's great. You know, if, if this were normalized, by that I mean not limited by pandemic and restrictions. You know, I, I might suggest that, you know, take the show on the road. And I was wondering if there was any discussion about the task force doing that as well as asking the Select Board to do that. And the first stop I would suggest that might be school committee and potentially the schools. So has there been any discussion by the, the task force about doing that?
I'll take that question then, then of course I'd love and welcome any of my fellow task force members to, to continue to add. We've not spoken in depth about the potential to share more broadly or widely after this. It wasn't entirely clear to us from the charge that we were provided from the Select Board. What was going to happen after these recommendations were delivered? So we did not spend a ton of time on that. Though that being said, one of the recommendations that is in the report is that the Select Board consider. Developing some sort of liaison or formal communication structure with the school committee.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? I see Steve Morantz and then Mark Strange, Steve? We're still muted.
Yes, first I would certainly like to thank this, this task force for the incredible amount of work they did. I think it was a, I'm really quite impressed by the document they've put out. And I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. I, I do believe based on what our report says, we as a Select Board should concentrate on what can be done immediately. In terms of recommendations. My feeling is one of the things we should discuss and I think is pretty easy to implement would be the whole hiring policies. Making sure in terms of what we put out. I suspect it's, we want everyone applying and we want to make sure that everyone can apply. And so hiring policies with recommendations the task force made about making sure that everyone can apply. Seems to be something that we can do immediately. You know, another thing in terms of immediate, just, just what, what the community says. We're talking about signage, you know, we can put, we can put end racism now, all these, all these things we can put in, in the schools, on, on, on town buildings. I think those are really easy and fairly simple to do. Those, you know, those are stuff, you know, the low hanging fruit. The other stuff is going to take some time and it's going to be hard. I will go to the hiring, in terms of hiring, and I don't know the legality of this, but I think, you know, let's take a look at candidates' Facebook pages. This, you know, there was some incident where somebody in this community, Facebook page, you know, they were, let's look at that stuff before that happens. This is, that's pretty easy to do. And I think that from a hiring point of view, that's something we should look at. And in terms of, we're talking about evaluation, there needs to be both, I would assume in the schools and in. You know, town employees, you know, there needs to be consequences for racist behavior. Whether, what that actually means, whether it's suspension, expelling, firing, this, it needs to be defined. And it needs to be, I think, implemented to make sure that, you know, one just doesn't waltz through life doing really ugly things to people. I. I, you know, administering a town-wide anti-racist trending program is doable. I'm not sure how immediate that is, but I think that's something that's worthwhile. You know, and we do need, I agree completely with the task force, at some point in time, sooner as possible, later, we do need to put our money where our mouth is in terms of getting this stuff done. I do have a question concerning what's going on with the schools. According to your report, you know, there is some organization that has been running this program with the schools. Which apparently was not particularly satisfactory to the task force. I'd like to hear more about that and what more, because based on what your report said is it seemed to be that the schools were, you know, an issue. What to do about that. So, but the fact that apparently the schools have hired this firm now at the end of their two-year, whatever it is that they've been doing. I'd like to hear more about what that is, why the task force appears to find that unsatisfactory and what they would suggest we do going forward. And those are my thoughts and questions.
So Zach, would you want to have you or someone on your committee address those questions now? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, I'm certainly happy to, though I welcome the insights of any of my colleagues first.
I can weigh in a little. The main critique of the organization in the schools has been around. Its outreach efforts and planning efforts to get feedback from the community, the limited nature of that. Some of the questions asked in some of the sessions seemed not particularly geared toward equity in areas of race. But rather other kinds of learning equity, which are equally important, but won't necessarily get you to the same result if you're not asking a very specific question. So the groups were participating at odd hours of the day when it would have been difficult for parents and, and larger community members, especially people with children, right? Who tend to populate school systems. When they weren't really able to give feedback, we didn't get good notice or widespread notice of the kind of community question and answer sessions. There has been very little follow-up in terms of what stages that they're at in the process. We've reached out a couple of times to, and, and have spoken to Superintendent O'Shea on a couple of occasions. But those have sort of, those interactions have sort of left with, well, you know, we'll update you. But then we don't really get the follow-up without having to go back and seek it out. And so those were the kind of primary critiques was, you know, how this group was, was chosen. And so those were the kind of primary critiques was, you know, how this group was, was chosen and then the, how it's, how it was focused and then how it managed to engage. I think that one meeting that it had that, where it had an open call for community participation from parents, I think there was a very small number of parents there. Zach, I think you may have been in that meeting and I, there may be others on the call that were, I was not, but I think it might, was less than 10 people from the community that were represented. So i- if that gives you an idea of, of how limited the feedback is, it will give you an idea of what the, the limitations of the findings are, are likely to be.
Okay. Any other comments from the task force? All right. You did a great job. I don't think you left a lot of gaps in what you described, so thank you very much. And your name again is?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Lauren Rollins. I'm at 217 Laurel's.
Thank you, Lauren. All right. Good. So Stephen, is that, Marantz, does that give you an indication?
Yes, I, I mean, so would the task force ask the school committee to have a do-over in terms of what you would like to see the school department do in terms of, or is it more than the school department would be, you know, for every department in town? But specifically, how would you, what would you recommend that the schools actually do as opposed to what they've done so far?
Well, the largest piece is getting additional participation, because what we see is that there is a big divide between the feedback given about the schools from primarily white residents of Long Meadow, right? And then the feedback given about the schools from students of color. So, you know, any attempt to try to get a wider range of input is going to determine how useful its recommendations are and, and how in tune with what's actually happening in the schools, particularly when what you're talking about, right, is like, people generally aren't overtly racist because that's easy to punish, right? But it, so these are things that are happening that people are less likely to report, and so you really have to make a concerted effort to get that kind of feedback. So I think it would be premature to ask for a do-over because I think there's still a lot of information that we don't have about what's actually been done, and I think that's part of the issue. Is just the initiative in general was not well-publicized or explained. And so that kind of had knock-on effects for its utility. So I think it, I think you all are right that have suggested that, you know, some sort of further partnership with the school committee is going to be necessary to try to get some of these gaps filled in and then to determine, you know, can we resurrect any gaps and take the path of least resistance to, so we don't sink resources we've already spent, right? But so that we can try to build on what's already been done. We don't, I mean, I, I think I can speak for the, the task force when I say we're not entirely critical of the work they've done. We don't know enough about it to say whether or not it's been successful. So I think like a, a more, an education campaign would be very useful and then we should go from there before we start trying to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the task force or, well, okay.
I'm Nina Grover. I was thinking, you know, in our schools, we would love to see more, maybe at least twice a year, some cultural events where we mix all communities. My daughter lives in Boston and can you believe they have twice a year and the whole town is involved? It can be dances, food. So it builds up relationship with different cultures and the people and the families. And that was, I was thinking that we do lack that. My kids grew up there and I always felt that something, even in our Long Meadow days, it's very nice, we're not criticizing, but we can easily bring some fun and cultural mix like Spanish, Indian, Chinese, showing their culture and bringing that harmony and that will lead to more people coming to our town and employment, hopefully. That's just my view. And the committee also liked it too.
All right. Well, Nina, thank you. You know, we are looking for someone to take over the the Long Meadow days and maybe the Cultural Commission will listen to your comments. Thank you. So I know Mark Strange has been hoping to get a question in. Why don't we try to fit you in now, Mark?
Thanks, Tom. So yeah, I just wanted to echo what the other Select Board members had said. I think the report is outstanding. It's, it's thorough. It's well-researched. It's clear and, and you've asked for specific actions from the town moving forward. I, I, you know, again, I agree with a lot of the stuff that, all the stuff that, that that Steve suggested, you know, for me, I think one of the most important things that, that can get done, we can take away from the report and implement is a, a firmly implanted committee on diversity and inclusion that has a constant presence now and into the foreseeable future that can have, you know, impacts and, and, and influence all the other, you know, suggested actions moving forward by the Select Board and by, by the town administration. So I'm not quite sure, you know, what that would entail. If that's a, that needs a a charter amendment or if that's the Select Board can get on, but I would, that, that would be my, my recommendation for, for kind of first, first item out of the shoe. I think if you, if we have a committee in town dedicated and devoted to diversity and inclusion and equity, I think that's going to go a long way. Change happens very slowly. You know, but if you have, you have a, a, a constant, consistent group of people meeting and, and effectuating, you know, agenda items, I think that'll go a long way.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments from Select Board members?
Yeah, I had one, Tom. Zach, is it your envision that you're going to be coming back to the Select Board on some type predetermined schedule for updates or how do we, how do we keep this program alive? What's, what's your vision if you were optimally going to have a vision? What would it be? Did you hear me, Zach?
Yeah. Wow. It's an interesting question. I can. Sorry for the delay. I think a couple of things are, are likely true and I welcome additional insights from anybody on the task force that would share them. But I know one of the key criticisms of D E I work, diversity, equity and inclusion work in organizations across the country is that it gets put into a silo and it's something that happens sort of over there and it never becomes core and central to the work and so never truly moves the needle. It doesn't change mindsets. It doesn't change attitudes. It doesn't change practices and policies and day-to-day life for people that work in those organizations. So my fear would be in an effort in a municipal setting like the town of Long Meadow that if this effort and opportunity were siloed somewhere, in terms of our first task is to get the audio. I think it's continuing to move the needle for Long Meadow citizens and families moving forward. I think, one, a training and education around anti-racism, equity and social justice and the history of marginalization and oppression in communities across the country is really, really important for all tree, all town employees, both now and in the future. And then two, I think the consideration and adoption of somebody high level in the town government who is able to continue to move these efforts forward so that it isn't something that over time gets siloed off or just kind of gets left by the wayside because there hasn't been that investment and that commitment by the town to continue to move things forward because, and I'll just speak for myself, as a, as a white guy that grew up in a predominantly white community, I didn't know what I didn't know about being a white guy and what that meant for my socialization and my habits and the way that I view the world and the way that I unintentionally perpetuate racism until I took the time to actually sit down and listen and learn and study. And it's really easy for me as a white guy, if I'm not paying attention, to slide right back into that. And that's part of the privilege that I have in being white in this country. And so I think in the absence of having somebody that is on staff that is ensuring that these efforts are being maintained and sustained over time, it would be my fear that these efforts could very quickly fall by the wayside or become siloed or non-existent.
Okay. And you're, Zach, you're also aware that LCTV usually welcomes groups, organizations to come in and do taped presentations that they can put on a loop, you know, especially items like this. Have you contacted or talked with LCTV?
I don't believe that we have. I have not. I don't know if anybody else from the task force has spoken with them.
Okay. Cause I know usually they're, they're open for public information type stuff, and this definitely is public information type stuff. And, and I agree with you that I, I'm always afraid of stuff being siloed. That's why I was asking you what your vision would be. And I, and I don't mean for next month. I mean for the next five, 10, 15 years because it's, you're, a lot of the points you brought up are, are crystal clear and they do need, you know, exposure and they do need some curative mechanisms put on it. And, and I think both of us know, I think everybody on this, this screen in front of me realizes how long this venture could take. And it's going to take dedicated people like yourself to keep push, to keep pushing it to make it happen.
Thank you.
I have, I just have a comment that, you know, the things will change if we all think it seriously. If right now we are thinking it'll take five, 10, 15 years, it won't happen. This is, the problem is that we have the report, we are, our heart is in it. We want the request from the Select Board saying, oh, it's great. We will do it. We'll start something right in September. Don't prolong it for a long time. We'll work together and do it fast because some of the families do suffer with discrimination, including my kids. So this high time, don't postpone it. Let's find a way to do it earlier the better. Thank you.
I really value the urgency that Nina names. I'm Reverend Charlotte La Forest and the rector at St. Andrews, which is why my account just says St. Andrews Church because it automatically logs me in. But I think, you know, the fact that we in Long Meadow declared racism a public health emergency in the midst of another public health emergency in the midst of the pandemic. And so we see the action and the energy and the quick work that went into trying to find a response to the COVID public health emergency. And so to say, no, of course, it, it can take a long time to address these things. It usually takes a long time to find a vaccine, except that resources were poured in and collaboration happened that didn't typically happen. And there was a response that was much swifter. And so I think just like we saw a much quicker rollout of COVID vaccines than anyone was saying is possible. If we address this public health crisis, the racism and the severe impact that it has on our community, if we address that with the same urgency, things can change. We can change behaviors. We can change ways of thinking. I mean, that is how you address a public health emergency. You know, think about the work that's gone into heart disease and the public awareness of how we need to change our behavior to have an impact on the outcomes we're seeing for heart disease. We need to really look at behavioral change within our community, not just ideas. Not just, well, we convened a commission and they put out a great report and, and check, we've, we've done our work. But how do we really go about changing behaviors in the community?
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, this is Kathleen Allen on Lincoln Road. I so appreciate the questions from the selectmen seeking urgency on this and seeking sustainability about how do we keep this momentum going? I just want to acknowledge that first. It, it excites me that that's the direction that the conversation is going in. I think one of the things that, that we saw as a committee is that the, the boldest and the bravest action to take and, and, and perhaps the most impactful act, action to take would be the hiring of a diversity, equity and inclusion leader, much like we just had the vote for the head of DPW to keep it, to, to, to send a message to the town that we think this is so important that we are continuing an investment in this manner to the, to the point that came up earlier, how do we keep this on the forefront? Recognizing that maybe financially, maybe we can't do that. Maybe it's something we do in concert with other, a couple of other towns to do it at a regional level. Or maybe it is something we financially can do and put into the budget for the next year along those lines. There are, there is a trend in municipal government that we were reading about, about municipalities that were taking that action and working towards ways of taking that action of having an individual who sat at the same level as your, our head of DPW, et cetera, et cetera. So I just offer that as a thought as well.
Thank you. Okay. So I just would like to have my comments before we move on to other folks. And basically, you know, I think about, if you look at a person, you look at their priorities, you basically, you, you do, you look at what they spend their money on. They spend a lot of money on books, music, alcohol, you know, vacations, you know, clothes. What are their priorities? And, and, and I think the same thing with the town. You know, when we look at, you know, racial justice, we need to say, you know, this needs to be somewhere on the priority. We can't just say, you know, we're, we're supporting what this task force has, has found and then not put any money forward. And I know that, you know, we've talked to Lynn about some ways to do this and there'll be more discussions. But yes, if, if, if we don't make this a financial priority, at some point it's down the road. But I also agreed with a couple of things by, by other Select Board members. I, I'm really proud to be a member of the Select Board. You know, Steve Marantz said, well, we should separate out, what are the things we can do immediately? And what are the things we're going to have to do later? And, you know, I looked at, you know, it's like specifically the requiring some diversity in the interviewing process is a, is a huge opportunity for us as a town to start to impact this problem because as we all know, how many times do you apply for something and then you never get an interview? And so bringing in and making sure that this pool has some diversity in it is a big step, you know? It would be nice if the person is also qualified and they get the job, but, but even if they weren't, you know, that's a, that's a big step. You know, we talked about these, these new hirings and just imagine how it would impact the town if our DPW director was a, was a person of color or a woman, you know, or something. That would change things dramatically because it would affect the people who are working for them. So, you know, we have to look at some of these immediate changes and then what would be the next priorities. But also when we look at the educational campaign, you know, Richard Foster brought up LTC TV, you know, and I've watched, you know, programs there and I've seen discussions and comments from the city of Springfield that talk about inequity and talk about how we can make this a better community, the city of Springfield. And yes, you know, we should have similar kinds of programming that comes from the town. And again, when we look at the school, our, our town's priorities, you know, obviously the thing we spend money most on is employees. But really, education is our, our main, we spend more money on education than anything else. And so, you know, the results of your report are really, you know, education is a big part of it. And so we want to And so we want to, um, see that, you know, we work in conjunction with the schools, you know? We're not adversaries, that we're working together. Because there are two things that are important. And, and one of them is our perception and our, our cognitions, our thinking about race and about diversity and about, uh, who's deserving and who isn't deserving. And how do we make this a more inclusive community? And then the second part is behavior change, you know? And trying to let people understand and, and from your report, it was clear that there needs to be some behavior change at the school level. Um, because that's probably where, you know, people of mixed races are, are com, are coming into contact with each other more than anywhere else in town. But, you know, I think this report offers the board an opportunity to start making changes quickly. And, and, and we need to sort them out. And so, and again, I'm thankful for all your hard work and, uh, and thoughtfulness. Now.
Mr. Chair, if I could, sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, Ryan, please.
Ryan McCollum, 12 Long Meadow Street. I just wanted to thank the select board. Um, you, you guys, and I said guys, but you all did not have to do this, right? There's surrounding towns that are actually more diverse than Long Meadow that aren't, didn't do this. And so you all should pat yourselves on the back for, for what you did. And then the other thing about what you did is, you know, I've worked on a lot of commissions at the state level, a lot of working groups in government. You know, I can tell you the talent of this task force was right up there with any other, any other of them. Um, and so that report that you see is, that's a first-class report and it, it should be looked at um, as you guys are, are saying very seriously. Um, and to the point where I think we're, I think we're all agreeing that there's some things that can happen right away and we have to attack this problem, just like, um, the reverend said, this is a health crisis that needs to be attacked right away. But at the same time, we have to stay deliberate and intentional. Um, you know, once you cure, can't, if you, if you, if your cancer goes into remission, there's still things you have to do to keep it in remission. The doctor's got you on a certain plan so you don't go back. And so that's, that's exactly how we should look at this and, and some of the sustainable things that we can put in place um, after we attack the, the things that we can, um, are going to be very key. So I did want to just say one more time, you know, thank you, select board for, for putting me, but also, um, this talented group of people we have in town, um, together, because I, I think this is going to make a real change. But now the ball, the ball's in your court. You know, we did what we were, we were tasked to do. We, we stand ready to help you in anything else, but the ball, the ball's in your court as our elected officials to, 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 to put it in the hoop.
Well, gee, I felt we could just blame it all on Lynn if nothing happened. No, thank you. Um, was there any other comments? I know Steve Moran's here.
I, I have one more comment. I like the idea of schools and, you know, hiring and great ideas by you. The other thing I was thinking, this is the best time, our senior center. You know, we are getting a new senior center and we can start with a, something bringing more exposure to diversity. And because that may be another source of bringing not only to children, but to people our age to intermingle with different cultures. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Steve Moran's?
I had a question in terms of the task force. There used to be something called the Metco program, which actually brought minority students to the schools in Long Meadow. Did anyone, is that, is that gone? Does that still exist? Did you run across that in your, in your studies?
They used to have it, but then it, I think it just stopped. There was some problem taking care of the kids. I was involved and it ran for almost 10, 12 years, but then it stopped.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if Metco is still there, but there was school choice as well that happened to have, you know, students of color, had friends from Springfield that would come here. I think one of the issues that we found is that, you know, we were given the charge by you all as the select board. Um, and so the schools is, you know, obviously governed by the school committee. And so we would dip our toe into the schools, but, and it'd probably be me that, that would kind of pull people back and say like, what is our charge? What did the select board charge us to do? What do they have the power to charge us to do? So the school piece is, is, is an interesting piece where we, we kind of keep going back there because that seems where there's the most overt problems. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily say there is the most overt problems there all the time. Um, but that's why that liaison to the school committee is very key and very important. Um, so that, so that we can attack this problem, you know, um, si, townwide. Um, but again, it was tough for us to kind of figure out what we were able to do when it came to the schools.
Great, okay.
Mara DeMaio, 119 Noah Drive. I just wanted to piggyback on what Ryan was saying about the school and, and I think some of that's about a do-over. And I think for a do-over, it would have been to have more of a collaboration with the school because we were doing things in parallel and not in collaboration at all. And a lot of the feedback that we got was related to the school systems. And since we weren't doing anything in collaboration, it, it, it just felt like there was so much we could do together, not apart, and so there could be a lot of redundancy going on. And then just really having that done in parallel when we're getting a lot of feedback from students was really hard, I think. Um, when it was separate and, and not, um, you know, in collaboration. And I also just wanted to reiterate what Kathleen had also said about hiring somebody and resources. So for some of us who are involved in these efforts in other areas where it's discretionary effort without resources and without hires, it's not sustainable and things don't get done. The, the piece that needs to get done, the depth that needs to get done and with the intentionality that Ryan was talking about and the sustainability. So really, I think someone has said, Steve, at the beginning, put your money where your mouth is. It's really important in this. If we want some long-lasting impactful change, that we need to put resources forward in the budget for this, not just hiring somebody, but education isn't free, right? Not if, you have, there's a lot of different parts of our report that are going to require a budget if you really want it done, um, in a thorough way. And so I just wanted to just reiterate that.
Okay, thank you. So I know we could talk about this all night. So we aren't going to solve it, but we, we did get a great report here. And it gives us some, some stuff to ponder and, um, some directions to move forward. So I, again, I'd like to thank the task force for all of your efforts. And, um, you know, and we'll, I know, I guess technically you guys can disband, but, um, I, I think it's, it's good to know that we can always call on you folks as we move along. Hopefully you guys will be willing to, to answer questions or to, to help us make some decisions down the road. So we'll, we'll have to end it there, but thank you again for joining us this evening and, uh, hopefully we'll see you around. Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good night. All right, so now we get to talk about, um, less exciting things in a way. But we, we need to set the town election date, which, uh, is a standard thing that we do. And we have requests from Catherine Ingram, the town clerk, to request to select, that the select board vote to hold a June 22nd annual town election at the community house. Is our, there's a change of polling, uh, place and we have to take, we have to do this 20 days prior to the election. So any discussion on this? Should we just move to a motion?
I would move the motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to set the date for June 22nd. And any other discussion on this? Okay, Mark Barbeary, will you do a roll call?
Mr. Lacusa?
Yes.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Moran's?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
All right, and the next is the approval for a project change order 136 for the adult center facility. And it has to do with the elevator. Um, it's from WJ Monford. We've all received this. And it looks like a, a sump pump and separator to the elevator. And for some reason, this is an addition. And we have Mary Beth Bergeron who will be joining us. I believe she's here now. Am I correct?
Yep, I just added her in.
Okay. And, uh, Mary Beth, I will have you, uh, explain, you know, what, why there's this change order. Was there a lot more water there than we expected, uh?
No, no, it's actually a little different than that, Tom, and it's far more complicated, although the site certainly is wet. Um, we've adjusted for all of that, um, the water on site and hopefully that'll work continuously as the years go by. Um, what this is, is essentially, um, a change order that was precipitated by a change in code that happened in 2019, which was post, um, the design of the adult center and specifications being clarified. I'm not pretending to be an expert in elevator installation, but I think I do understand what needs to happen here. Um, an elevator operates. It has a significant amount of oil to help it operate. There's approximately 80 gallons of oil, um, that are used to operate that particular, uh, machinery. Um, the elevator, uh, has a pit underneath, um, in the ground. In that pit, there is another pit that accommodates a sump pump. In the event of, let's say there's a fire in the building and there's this significant amount of water that enters the building, that water out, uh, obviously has to be pumped out, uh, from the elevator sump pump pit. And so this includes the installation of not just that sump pump, but the code change would, entails installing an oil separator, which is a second device that is used to, uh, literally trigger a separation of the water and the oil so that the oil does not contaminate the water and enter into the stormwater sewage system, which would create a, obviously 21E, um, hazardous material disposal, uh, which would be very costly for the town. When this, uh, elevator design was done by Catlin, um, that code requirement was not in effect. Um, because of the cost of doing it at this point, the architect did go to the state and attempt to get a variance to, um, uh, remove that requirement for the oil separator. He was not successful. And so therefore we're coming back to the select board now because of the amount of the, uh, change um, to include this, um, sump pump and oil separator. If you look at the last pages on the, um, on the, uh, submission, you'll see that it is a very complicated installation. There is a, a control panel that is in the elevator machinery room, which is behind the elevator. It's a sump pump that's installed. Then there's a sump pump that is installed underneath the elevator device itself. Um, the water has to be pumped up over the ceiling, which is now finished. Um, it has to go over the gas line that feeds the fireplace. It will go over to the janitor's closet, which is a fair distance away, which is why you see a large number there, not for the device, but also for the piping that has to happen to bring it over into the janitor's closet. They have to install a vent that will go up through the janitor's closet, the second floor, and be up to the, through the attic and out through the roof. This is a difficult installation when the building is already really finished. The water is there separated from the oil and the oil and the water will be discharged over across the hallway and down into the bathroom traps, um, in the men's room. So at this point in time, although this is an expensive installation, it would have been less expensive, no doubt, um, had it, had, had been included at the initial, um, design of the building. That being said, you know, we're two years, three years post, um, that installation, that design being made. Um, I'll also back this up and say this is not a local plumbing inspector or a, a local elevator inspector. It's the state inspectors that are requiring this. Um, you can't override it. The variance was not given. And so this is a must to happen or the building can't open. We did, um, at the building committee level, we had a fair amount of discussion as to whether we should recommend to the select board that we do it on a time and materials basis because it is possible that, um, each of the subcontractors may not spend the amount of time that they have allocated for. Um, but based on the, uh, difficulty of this installation, we also knew that if we did a T and M and recommended that to the select board, it could go over that, which would just stop the work and we'd be coming back to you for more money. Um, and I think it's wise for the town to limit the amount of money that could be expended on this through Monford. And if they're, they went over on the time required and the finish, uh, repair work that would have to take place. Um, you know, I think this is wise to, to just set a limit on the change order and approve it as is at the amount of $29,628.
Well, Mary Beth, you do sound like our resident elevator expect, uh, but, uh, I would have to say that being an elevator, uh, expert has its ups and downs.
Yes, it does.
Uh, I guess one thing I would say is, you know, we, we did the design of this a while ago.
Yes.
Now, wouldn't the architect or someone involved at some points, or, or someone say, oh, by the way, this regulation changed. We have to redesign. I mean, that's just.
The issue, I have to honestly say, the issue only came up, started coming up about four or five months ago. Um, when the elevators started to get installed and then the elevator installation folks said, you know, we think, well, you may have this issue. And of course that puts the back to the architect, where the architect's trying to get the variance unsuccessfully. Um, I think it would have been, you know, it's five, six months ago, even, never mind two years ago, it would have been less expensive. Would it have been a lot less expensive? I'm not so sure because it's still fairly complicated. Um, but you know, understand the ceiling tiles have to come down. They're going over a coffered ceiling at this point. It's, it's not an easy job. And I can, I would understand if they would say, oh, you can have somebody else do it later. But we can't do that because we need the elevator in order to open the building at some point.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Any questions for the board on this? Uh, Mark Gold, I see you.
Yeah, Mary Beth, could you just iterate, who picked this up and when?
I would say, I, my guess, this is just, you know, there's been a lot happening over the last year or so, but I would say five or six months ago, this came to our attention.
But, but was it, you know, the elevator subcontractor who picked it up or was?
Yes, yes. No, it was the elevator subcontractor. The architect, of course, took the position that the last three, uh, installations he did, and, and that would be, at last two I know of, at Walpole and Wellesley in the state of Massachusetts, they do not have this separator because, um, they were completed before the code change.
I, I just, my, my only question is, you know, could we have been notified earlier by, and I don't know by, or by what? I mean, that's the, it's not a matter of whether we do it. We don't, no, it's not like we have a choice. The question is, what took so long for somebody to figure it out?
All I can say is it came to my attention about four or five months ago at the building committee meetings where there was a lot, there was discussion about the issue. Um, but that it was represented that they were going to try to get a variance, um, from the state and that was not successful. And then of course it goes out, it has to be designed, how they're going to do it, and then has to be priced out. So that takes another six weeks. And so here we are.
So we're, what bucket of money might this come from?
We have the money in contingency.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, hearing none. I guess I would look for an emotion, a motion to approve this change order. If anyone wants to make it.
All right, I'll make a motion. We approve, uh, the adult center change order 1, uh, 136 for the amount of $29,628.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mike Barbeary, will you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Lacusa?
Yes.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Moran's?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay, Mary Beth, thank you for joining us and, uh.
Thank you, Tom.
Even though some of these other projects, they didn't have to go through this, I, you know, it, it does make sense to separate the oil. I mean.
There's no doubt about it. Yeah. And it, and we are talking about it somewhat of a catastrophic event of having an oil spill of any significance, but they don't, five gallons and it triggers, uh, the EP involvement. Um, and, and clearly, we all know the catastrophic, catastrophic events happen. So, you know, it is, it is wise to do the separation.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Such good work.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so our last item is ever-source work, uh, the town right away. And we have documents that look at Hillside and Long Meadow Street. And then later Williams at Laurel. And so I believe we have a representative from EverSource to talk about this, Lynn, am I correct?
Yes, I just uh moved him in now.
Great. And if you could just please introduce yourself and uh. Let us know what documents you'd like us to look at or what your uh your plan is. And again, these are.
Okay, I am muted myself, sorry.
Okay, it's all right, so it's it's. A gas vault, and and are both of these gas vault changes?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so maybe you should explain what a gas vault is.
I I'm gonna do that, so high pressure gas to lower pressures that are used. In people's homes and businesses throughout Long Meadow. Uh they're critical uh components of the gas distribution system. And uh they, these are existing stations, but we are adding extra levels of safety. Uh some extra protection and the reason these are coming to you this evening is because both locations. Uh will include an above-ground cabinet where we have SCADA equipment. And SCADA equipment is uh supervisory control and data acquisition capabilities. It allows us to not only monitor exactly what is happening within that station. But also to tell us what is going on in the distribution systems in in Long Meadow. Now, I can do two, one of two things, I can go through these verbally with you and describe the projects at each of the two locations. Or I can uh share my screen and go through in great detail. Uh and I guess that's up to you, Mr. Chairman and committee members, which you would prefer.
It's a good question, you know, we have the materials and I think what would start was, maybe you could just. I don't know if the board would agree that you could just present it and then if we have questions, you could always refer to the. You could let him take the screen over and then refer to it, does that sound good to the board? Move forward that direction?
Um from my perspective, the documents are. Very, very difficult to read, I mean, I, you know, and I, and I, you know, I tried to go through this stuff pretty thoroughly. I thought it was really tough, I'd much rather see it, but I'll defer to the group.
Anyone else have any concerns?
Um I collect the two locations are Hillside and Laurel, those are, those are two separate locations we're talking about.
Yeah, Hillside at Long Meadow and uh Will- Laurel, Williams at Laurel Street.
Okay.
All right.
But also, I can I just, I want to make sure I understand, this is, this is the contractor doing the work for EverSource. Telling us why EverSource wants to do this work, shouldn't EverSource be telling us why they want to do this work?
They, they, they certainly would like to and unfortunately on this Monday in May. There are, we have tremendous amount of conflicts with several committees like yourselves meeting. And um I was the, I'm the project manager, I've been in the gas industry for forty years and they asked if I would uh go through this. My team has done the design and we're familiar with the uh with the locations. But we do apologize that EverSource cannot make the presentation this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment that that speaks to what EverSource thinks of the town of Long Meadow, their gas division. I think if they want to do this, they ought to send somebody here and I'm pretty annoyed that they haven't. And Mr. Burns, I I respect your capabilities and the fact that you're caught in the middle of this. But we're trying to deal with with the contract with the utility directly and very frankly, you know, that's concerning to me.
And I can, I'm certainly planning on passing that on to.
So why don't you tell them to cut, to reschedule this and come, come by and talk to us directly?
I would, I would move to make that motion.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Can I uh?
Yes, we have discussion now, please, go ahead.
Okay, um I actually have someone from EverSource who's on the call who just cleared up and is, can be brought in if you would like. Richard Salvarezza, who's the uh field engineer for EverSource in the Springfield area.
Great.
I'm moving him in now.
Okay, that's, that's fabulous, good.
Okay, so, so um in response to the motion, we've never had such a quick response.
You like that?
We didn't have to vote on it, uh so I guess we can withdraw the motion, uh Steve.
Uh I I need to hear a little more about uh the EverSource representative, can I hear?
All right, but at some point we need to clean that up.
Yes, I I agree, but.
So we have a, a representative from EverSource, uh can you please uh, you know, state your name and. You've been unm- unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're Richard?
Yes, I'm Richard Salvarezza, I apologize for for being late to the meeting. Again, uh I I work with the engineering department in in the Springfield office with EverSource and uh, yeah, I can certainly. Talk about the, about this project and give the council a little bit more detail about what's going on. I think AMOS covered it quite well, but I can certainly give some more background.
Okay, well, one of the, you know, one of the.
I was, I was, I was draw, I was draw the motion, but um no disrespect to uh Mr. Barnes. I don't think he covered it well at all, I'd like to hear a lot more.
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't quite finished yet, but that's fine, let's go.
So um we can, I I will let you speak, why don't we start that, Richard?
Sure, absolutely, so um touched on it earlier, there's, you know, various pressure systems um. That make up the gas distribution system in in Long Meadow and as a component of that configuration. There are what we call district regulator stations. Distributed around the town and and really all of the surrounding communities as well. Over the last couple of years, the company has been interested in making strategic upgrades to. Uh the, what we call low-pressure regulator stations. And and these are regulator stations that feed into the low-pressure system. So these are um, this is the kind of system that feeds. People's homes, people's businesses and the key detail here is that. These are relatively, these are older systems, um of course, we're targeting those systems for main replacements. Um specifically replacing low-pressure mains with what we call medium-pressure systems. And the key difference there is that each customer had on a medium-pressure system, which is the more modern facility, has a regulator at their home. As this is uh an ongoing program that's gonna take many years to complete, I believe we're. Somewhere between ten and fifteen years um away from completely abandoning our low-pressure systems. As a, as an additional uh. Safety um improvement to our low-pressure stations until those systems can be replaced. There's a lot of interest in adding monitoring technology. And this is, this is equipment that is integrated in with the existing station, it's kind of a retrofit project. Where we're taking the existing station and we're adding uh what we're calling just a SCADA cabinet. And the SCADA cabinet is taking pressure readings from the regulator station. It looks at the upstream system and the downstream system and it's continuously monitoring those pressures uh systems and the pressure in the pipe. And relaying that information to the controller. And the control room has an operator twenty-four-seven uh watching the, the system. And all of these pressure sensors that are distributed across, across the system. This is a relatively new um. Kind of setup, a lot of the other distribution companies across the state and really across the country are implementing these devices. And so again, the, the, the gas controller in the control room is going to be able to monitor the system pressures. Council, councilmen may have heard over the last couple of years, we've also had a big push to install. Um automatic shut-off valves in all of our regulator stations. And the valve, these valves will automatically close in the event of. A potentially dangerous pressure fluctuation. Along with the installation of that automatic valve comes the need to monitor that station. And make sure that there's no abnormal conditions occur and. In addition to sensing pressure. The cabinet will also sense the position of the automatic shut-off valve. Um and transmit that data back to gas control, so in the event that the valve does close. Or that there's some abnormal pressure fluctuation in the main, the gas controller will see an alarm. Uh pop up on a screen and he'll immediately be able to dispatch a crew. Or a technician to the station and figure out what's going on. So I guess that's a summary of the technology itself, what, what it, what it actually is composed of. Is what you would typically see installed, installed near uh an intersection. Um for a, like a traffic cabinet, a uh like a signal light cabinet. So it looks like a stainless steel cabinet um and placed onto a concrete footing. And in the case of of this installation, being that it's a gas facility. And you know, we really don't want any damage to it, there's also gonna be some um. What we call ballards, which are traffic control pylons, so if a car comes in. It'll strike the baller and protect the, the facility, so there's gonna be four of those ballards to protect the cabinet. Um and I think. That's pretty, pretty well covers it, by default, they're stainless steel, I mean, we can, we can clothe them any, any way. Um that's, that's desired. I think that's, that's, that's about all I have, I hope I covered it. Certainly, please feel free to, to ask any questions that you might have.
Yeah, there'll be some, some questions, but from what you're saying, this is not um. A plan that's, it's gonna make the gas company any extra money, it's, it sounds like it's really about safety of the system, am I correct?
It is, it is, um, yeah, that's exactly correct.
Yeah, um so, you know, I, I imagine there's some questions from the board, um I don't know who wants to go first.
Steve Morantz does.
Yeah, Steve Morantz, here, thank you.
Several questions, um I believe Mr. Barnes said this reduces high pressure to low pressure. You said this reduces low pre, this increases low pressure to medium pressure. I, I assume.
I'll clarify my comments there, so I was, I was. Let's see, so there are various existing systems within the town of Long Meadow. Some systems that we call the medium-pressure system uh is, is in Long Meadow and then certainly the low-pressure system, which is. Uh some of the older infrastructure that we're targeting for replacement with medium-pressure systems, so. What you'll see is generally a crew running new pipe down the, down the road and rerunning all of the customer service lines. That is taking low-pressure mains and making them medium-pressure mains, so that's an ongoing process that the company. Has been doing for years and is trying, we're trying to replace those old pipes in the street. But fact of the matter is that that takes some years to complete. And the regulator stations that are supporting those older low-pressure systems. Need to be addressed in the meantime, um and this, this petition. This cabinet device that we're installing at existing regulator stations is a safety measure that. Will increase the safety of, of those, of those stations, existing stations.
So at these two sites, they're already, uh because on Laurel Street uh near Farmington. There is one of these, something or others that's below ground, it has those. I'm not sure this is to stop anyone from running into it, but they have the, the, the four yellow large stakes that uh if someone runs over them will. Hurt their car, um that's not the same thing as what you're talking about now, you're talking about existing stations. That must be underground, that you're gonna move above ground, I'm, I don't quite get exactly what you're doing.
So the station itself will not change, uh the piping that is below ground, there, there's no change there. However, an additional cabinet will be added to that site.
And the cabinet is, is what, this is the right, this is the, the meter reader ring, this is. Um what does the cabinet do that what's underground doesn't do?
What's underground is a device that takes high-pressure gas and regulates, regulates it down to a lower-pressure gas. It's a assembly of valves and pipes below ground. The above-ground component of this is gonna be an electronics system. Um and some, some pressure sensors, a cellular device that will communicate to the cellular network. And it's more of an electronics assembly that's gonna go above ground. And the reason for it to go above ground is, is really that for two reasons. A, we, we try and keep the electronics separate from the gas facility, um simply because. You know, that's a, that is a code requirement that uh due to the atmosphere in the vault, we just want to keep electronics separate. And the second reason is that in order to make contact with the cellular network, we need. We need the device to be above ground in order to get suitable reception.
Okay, I, I got that, but what you just said was what's underground reduces high pressure to low pressure. But this thing is gonna re, make low pressure go to medium pressure, wh- where's that happening in this system?
The device itself is not regulating pressure, it's just a safety, it's an information.
I, I, okay, so what, what is being built above ground is reporting what's going on below.
Correct.
But this reducing high pressure, low pressure or making low pressure go to medium pressure, that's not happening at all, I, those.
That's happening, so, okay, let me make this another distinction here, so we're talking about two different things. We're talking about the replacement of low-pressure facilities with medium-pressure facilities, that's an ongoing process that, that's happening. Where we're sending crews out, we're replacing those facilities in the street. We're also talking.
It's everywhere in Long Meadow, when you're replacing pipe, it's going from low pressure to medium pressure. Or a lot of what's going on in town.
Correct, correct. The regulator station itself is a mechanical device. That takes high-pressure gas and feeds the low-pressure facility, the low-pressure system.
Two other questions, one is where is the control room that's looking at all this stuff, the data that's coming out of these systems?
The control room is in uh South, Southborough, Massachusetts.
Not in Columbus, Ohio, but not next door, okay, that's closer. And so EverSource is uh willing to tell us in writing that, I mean. He'll, the, 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 the line that I'm, that concerns me is the one going down Laurel Street because. One of EverSource's proposed uh expansion systems is to go from. A meter station that may be built of long metal country called Down Laurel, Shaker, off, off through uh Forest Park. Which runs right by this, this particular thing you're talking about, so if you are, you know, willing to say and uh, you know. Uh, uh, attest to that this has nothing to do with that particular proposed. Um uh possibility that uh, you know, of, of the expansion of the EverSource system. Then I, I can, I can live with that, but like, that would be a reassurance that would help me a lot.
Yeah, absolutely, I can certainly provide that reass- reassurance. This initiative, the installation of these cabinets, is in no way related to the Western Mass Reliability Project. And is in no way a component of any. and is in no way a component of any expansion or reliability project.
And Eversource is willing to send out to the select board in writing?
Yes, yeah, I can certainly generate a letter to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Mark Gold, your question?
Thank you, thank, thank you, Mr. Silverenza. My reading is that this is a response to what happened in the Merrimack Valley. That you're putting in more pressure and flow sensors. By the way, my disclosure is I'm a chemical engineer. I think I understand the gas distribution system better than most people who work in the system. And, and my concern is that, that you're going to be tapping in pressure detectors or pressure taps into the, into the lines. You know, I support having flow detectors and, and check valves and shut down valves if there's runaway flow that would prevent what happened in Merrimack Valley. My concern is what assurances, what mechanisms, what processes do you have in place to assure that this will be done without any, any, without any, I'll say it again, without any leaks, without any safety issue. My, my concern with Columbia Gas, and I assume you folks are former employees of Columbia Gas, now working for Eversource, is that your processes or safety control are quite lacking and you don't have the proper procedures to assure that this job, and in fact, you're doing this twice on some moderate pressure lines, will be done with extraordinary safety. So I'm looking for that assurance that this will be done with zero, not point oh one percent, with zero probability or possibility of any issue.
Absolutely. So I can talk about that a little bit here. So you bring up a great point. You are correct. This is in effect kind of a response to the Lawrence event. Over the last couple of years, we've certainly taken many, many steps in improving the, the safety of our processes in our systems. And I'll just go through a few of the things that we've done. So right off the bat, we, we have, we've implemented a professional engineering approval process. So all of our plants are approved by a professional engineer. This is, this is a, a step that we did not do previously. So PE review for every design, every project. We've also taken steps on all of our regulator stations to kind of revamp our documentation. We've, we've investigated every single station. We've prepared updated drawings of every low-pressure station in our system. Certainly, the, in my mind, the most important safety device we've implemented is the automatic shut-off valve. I touched on it earlier, but it really is a device that prevents both overpressurization and underpressurization. So there's simply no way that a, an issue could, could overpressurize the downstream system so long as that device is operating properly. And again, to ensure that that device is operating properly is the reason why we're implementing these, these SCADA cabinets. So the other, the other, finally, the last part, the last detail I'll give on this is I have directed the crews who are going to be working on this project that any work to be done on these regulator stations will be done, A, with what we call a vacuum excavation truck. So it's a, rather than digging in with an excavator and a device that could result in damage to the facility, we're going to be using a vacuum excavation truck that's just going to be passively sucking the dirt away and will not require kind of a mechanized piece of equipment that could damage something below ground. And finally, I've also directed the crews to disable the regulator station while they're working on it. And during the summer months, we have the ability to disable the regulator stations. Flow rate through the station is, is pretty minimal. And so directed them to shut down the station and what's, quite honestly, when, when the station is shut down, there's nothing that really can, can, you know, there's no flow. So, so if something is damaged, there's not going to be an incident to the downstream system. Hopefully that answers your question.
Well, I, almost, I have two more questions.
Go ahead.
Issue obviously with shutting down is when you turn it back up. But, but the problem with Merrimack Valley was the work was done by subcontractors and actually a sub-subcontractor who, who at the time Columbia Gas had the greatest intentions in the world. But, you know, the game of telephone tag, the message never got to the sub-subcontractor. So the question is, who's doing this work? Will it be employees of Eversource or will it be a contractor or a subcontractor? And who from Eversource? Will there be somebody from Eversource onsite all the time that work is being done there?
The work is being done by a contractor. However, anytime we're excavating within 50 feet of a regulator station, the gas company employee has to be onsite to monitor the work. And so at all times when this contractor is going to be at the station, which is certainly within 50 feet, they're going to be there with pressure gauges, watching the system to make sure that nothing abnormal occurs.
But what's the authority of those people? Do they have the authority to shut down the, the work? Do they have, I mean, for example, what I didn't hear is we're going to walk, be running around with gas detectors sniffing the air to make sure nothing's happening. I didn't hear that and I wanted to hear that. You know, I didn't hear you say that we have a, a job audit procedure list that the contractor must follow to the letter. I wanted to hear that and didn't hear that. Those are the items that are missing, that were missing from Columbia Gas and appear to be continually missing from Eversource in order to get these jobs done safely.
Well, just to address a couple of those points, every Eversource employee has what we call stop work authority. So if they see, if anyone sees anything abnormal, someone doing something unsafe, anyone has the authority to stop, stop the job. That's first and foremost. To, just to touch on the gas detector, it's a, it's a part of our standard that the employee, that the, what we call the instrument and regulation techs, the guys that are responsible for the regulator stations, it's a part of our standards that they do have gas detectors monitoring the atmosphere within the vault or the station at all times while it's open. So that's, that's a great comment. And I feel like there was one other question escaping me here. I apologize.
And what are the dimensions of these, these vaults that are being constructed? I assume they're like, you know, two feet by two feet by three feet high or something like that?
The cabinet is four foot, two inches high by about a foot and a half wide by two and a half feet deep.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, the, the, yeah, the information that we were sent really didn't have a clear picture of anything that, that would show the size of the cabinet or the kind of bracing that you're talking about that would be around it. You know, one of the things that comes up quite a bit, and usually it's Mark Gold that brings it up, is, you know, how is this going to look to residents going by? Is there any kind of screening that you have planned to, to protect the visual impact of this? This is a pretty big cabinet.
We're certainly open to, you know, painting the cabinet green if that's something that the council, you know, desires. And certainly we're, we're also open to, you know, any kind of plantings, whether it be an arbor byde or some sort of fence, you know, we're, we're open to suggestions there as far as what, what the council, the DPW wants.
Thank you. That's, that's good news.
Tom, have we established a timing for this? When, when is your intention of doing this, Mr. Sullivan?
We're trying to work this during the summer months. You know, anytime between June to September.
So literally low, low demand for heating, natural gas heating in houses?
Correct.
Tentatively, these, these locations were scheduled for early September.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Tom, should we be referring to this idea, this concept of what it looks like to the planning board?
Okay, yeah. Need some better diagrams.
I'm not qualified to say whether it should be green or orange, but, you know, but the planning board generally has a, has plenty of input on that kind of stuff.
All right, so, so your recommendation, you know, we could ask other members of the board if they would support that, that, you know, a drawing that would show this kind of cabinet and the options, you know, be sent to the planning board so they could make a decision about, you know, making it fit into the town environment?
And, and the residents whose, whose tree belt it's going on. You know, if I had something like this in front of my house, I'd want to say on whether the, these pylons are painted yellow or painted green. I don't know. Maybe you can't, maybe they have to be painted yellow, but, you know, I recognize it's on the tree belt and that they're major streets, but the residents may have something to say about it. I mean, I, you know, I, I don't want people to get the wrong impression. Given what went on in Merrimack Valley, they need more monitoring. The problem is they need to do this job safely, you know. So I, I think additional monitoring, whether it's here or in Southborough, you know, something that detects high flow, detects low flow is critical to this operation. But I've not yet seen the gas company, the local gas company, whoever it's represented, have a proper safety approach to, to jobs like this. It's a major, you know, it, it has risk and that's all I, I was trying to get across.
Richard, I, I did have another question. Sometimes people have said that at times of high demand of gas, you know, when we have a cold snap and it's, you know, single digits, they, they, their flow may be affected and their pilot lights may go out. Would this have a positive effect on that kind of a thing?
It would actually. So when, when the flow rates in the system increase, when the demand increases, there is a need for the technicians to go out and visit the stations and, and kind of readjust the regulators as demand goes up. And having a, a pressure sensor at the regulator station would give the company the ability to kind of identify when those periods of high demand are, are happening. And if we don't, do start to see the regulator station kind of taper off as far as the pressure that it's feeding as demand goes up, it would give the, the opportunity for the company to dispatch a technician to, to make an adjustment. And so, yeah, you're right. It would, it would give us the ability to respond during, during high demand.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I mean, are they, is this a, you know, traditionally we'd gone through hearings for Verizon polls and Eversource streetlight polls. I mean, is this replacing that process, Tom? I was surprised to see this and not have it be a, a hearing from a, a utility looking to, if you will, get a variance or put something on, you know, on, on the tree belt. When, when we did something, we moved a, an electrical, I don't know, it was a substation or something in, in front of Rinaldi's, we got, had a hearing when we did it by the Big Y so they could put in a driveway, we, we went through a more formal hearing. I'm just surprised because that allow, that authorizes us to get, you know, responses from our DPW or input from other org, other organizations in town.
Okay, that's a question that I would direct towards our town administrator. Lynn, would you want to take that one?
Yes, I can answer as much as I know. So DPW did review this. There is a memo included in the agenda. This is not a poll petition. It doesn't follow the same public hearing notifications that poll petitions do. This is work within the right-of-way, which is why it's here in front of you.
Okay. And the, you know, the, the document from the DPW town engineer dated April 29th basically talks about some of the things that, the, the expectations they have. And it's, it says here cabinet shall be painted green. Plantings around the proposed cabinet shall match the existing adjacent structure. So DPW has already sort of addressed some of the things that we've talked about. And it sounds like Eversource is willing to comply with, with that part of it. I guess I'd ask you, Richard, is there anything on this list from, have you seen this memo? Do you have it handy or from our GPW?
I do not have the memo handy.
Okay, so one of the things I can do is I can just share screen quickly. Because you can see, correct? Am I correct?
Don't see your screen at the moment.
Oh, no, no, in a minute. So here, this is a, do you see this?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. So this April 29th and then so it talks about it and so it says some standard things. There's seven items. Do you, can take a quick look and see, are any of those going to be problematic for Eversource?
I see no issues with any of these items.
Good, great, thank you.
Yeah, Tom, I have a question for Lynn.
Yes, Richard.
Yeah, Lynn, based on, based on your research, is this something that would be precluded from going to the planning board?
That I don't know. I haven't looked at that. I could, I don't know. I mean, poll petitions don't go to the planning board. I don't know if there's an exception for utilities, but I can definitely look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Have the abutting resident been notified of this potential work? Is this just going to show up on their tree belt? I mean, not, not that they're going to have a choice necessarily, but at least they ought to know before, you know, 12 guys show up with a, and put a four-foot-high box on their tree belt.
So, Richard, do we know how long this construction would take?
It would take about a week per site.
So so your recommendation is that the, the property owners or abutters, because basically this is going to be put on town property, I would imagine, right? This is all in the, the right-of-way? Yeah. So we would just prefer that the abutters were made aware. And I don't know, you know, the gas company probably has some standard protocol in regards to that.
Don't bet on that, Tom. Oh, if he wants approval, like I said, they'll just show up with a crew and are doing it, they're working on town property. The town right-of-way. I mean, if we're going to put an end to this, I'll, I'll make a motion. We approve the, the two petitions by Eversource Gas subject to having notification of the, a, a week's prior notification of the date that they begin, notification of the, of abutters and following the recommendations. Notification of the, uh, the butters and following the recommendations and requirements of the DPW.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion? I, I will second the motion. Any further discussion?
Uh, I would like to invoke the Mark Gold rule of that we actually don't vote on anything the first time we've seen it.
I'm saying, good job.
So, um.
A second.
Okay.
Tom, I think, I think we asked Lynn a question we haven't got an answer for. I, I think, I think, uh, Steve's right. Why don't we put this off the next meeting? As long as there's no, there's no massive rush. This is not a critical thing. It's, it's in the process. So let's get, let's get a couple of answers back first.
Okay.
Draw the motion.
Okay, so we'll draw the motion. Uh, we, we'll discuss it next week. We'll have a little more time. Again, um. You know, with, although this is primarily a project to deal with safety, gas safety. You know, I don't think another two weeks is gonna make a big difference, but. I just wanna go down on the record saying I would have voted on it tonight if there's an explosion. Thankfully, hopefully there won't be. So, and that's where we, we leave this, uh, Richard. We will put it on our agenda for two weeks from now, which would be. May seventeenth and we will. Hopefully have all our questions answered and be able to take a vote on it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for joining us. And that brings us to the end of our meeting. We have a couple of correspondents. But I guess I would be looking to look for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, Tom, can I make one editorial comment? I understand that you made that, that last statement in somewhat in jest. But I'd hate, I'd hate to leave a meeting by us saying, well, we didn't work on something tonight. If it blows up next week, I just wanna make sure that I voted to do it tonight. Cause we have no indication that this poses any significant safety threat to our community whatsoever.
It, it's just standard safety work that probably needs to be done. I would, don't wanna panic people, correct?
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Okay. Given that last editorial, do we wanna, uh, have a motion? Okay, can we do a roll call vote? Yes.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morans?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. And, uh, we'll see you in two weeks.
I'll see you at the town meeting.
Oh, at the town meeting, correct.